This conference will now be recorded.
John, good evening. How are you doing? Good evening, Gary.
Good evening, Mr. Roberts.
Alan, good evening.
Good evening. It's Larry.
Oh, yeah, it kind of threw me off there. Looking at the first name. Mr. Prince, good evening.
Yes, sir.
Well, good evening. It's 7:00 PM and this is the regular meeting of the Planning and zoning Commission of Logovista Texas. And of course, we'll start off maybe by calling our role if you'll just acknowledge. Charles Solomon, are you there? I know he had some new device and maybe he's having some issues. We'll see if he does join us. Tom, Tom Monahan's there.
I'm here.
And Richard Brown. Well, we don't see Richard Brown. Larry Hagler, hi Larry.
I'm here. Oh, no, Richard's trying to call me.
What is he calling you?
Hey, Richard.
Andy White?
Here.
Oh, there you are, Andy. And Paul's there. Hi, Paul.
Hello.
And Roy, are you hiding out there somewhere?
Yes, sir. I'm saving your bandwidth for the important stuff.
Oh, okay.
We get your cameras going here and all of a sudden the sound starts going bad, so.
I see that Arch is there. Arch, are you filling in for our esteemed liaison, David Williams?
Yes, sir, I am.
All right.
As you may know, he had.
He had a what? Sorry.
He had shoulder surgery yesterday.
Shoulder replacement surgery that was done.
Yesterday.
Yesterday, wasn't it? Yeah.
Well, he should be okay by now, shouldn't he? Had a whole day. Of course, our.
I don't think he can operate his right arm.
Our city attorney, Aaron Silbera, good to see you this evening.
You too.
And did we ever find Richard Brown?
Richard will be with us in just a minute. He had a little technical difficulty.
Oh.
I sent him the link again, just in case. I don't know if it helps.
Okay, well, that's what I was fixing to do, was send him the link.
I just did.
Okay, thank you, Roy. And happy birthday next week.
Oh, thank you very much. You sent me a cake, Larry?
I thought, Roy, that's all out for a drink.
Oh, okay. Well, that's fine, too, I suppose. Linda, you've joined us, I see. So what about Charles Solomon? Did Charles ever join us? I don't believe so. All right, we'll go ahead and get started then. Of course, the citizen comments for non-agenda items in accordance with Open Meetings Act, the commission is prohibited from acting or discussing other than factual responses to specific questions for any item not on the agenda. So are there any citizen comments at this time? Either of not hearing any, and I see Mr. Roberts shaking his head in the negative. All right, okay. Then we'll go ahead and start our public hearing and applications. Item number one is 201658-C0CO-U. Consideration of a recommendation regarding a conditional use permit application pursuant to Section 17 of Chapter 14 of Logovista Code ordinances to allow for an accessory building that exceeds the maximum size and height at 21710 Suri Lane, R.K. Ranches, Platte Lot 80494. And Roy, if you would take us through the staff presentation.
My mic turned on. Yes, sir, this is one that we were going to put on your agenda last month, but again, we had some old Platte data that showed this as three separate lots. And as a result, the notification boundary wasn't what it should have been. And we did not discover it until about two days after the deadline. But everything's fine now. The notifications have been sent out. It is, again, ever so slightly higher than our ordinance allows. Our ordinance says it should be 18 feet at grade, adjacent grade. This is, you know, six inches from the finished floor, you know, probably another six inches above that maybe. But the height is marginal and there's no reason to believe that it's necessarily, you know, any higher than the existing building, you know, based on the contours. If it is, it's marginally so. You know, the size, of course, is bigger than allowed, but, you know, it's going to have the appearance of a single-family residence on a different street. Now, having said that, the biggest problem, and it's not in front of you, but I wanted to take the opportunity to warn the applicant that the city engineer has been real picky lately about the driveway standards. And because this is technically one lot, you may have to go in front of the Building and Standards Commission to get permission to put, you know, supposedly you're limited 24 feet on any one lot and your other one's 20 feet, so I don't think you want a four-foot driveway expanding, so. Normally, I expected him for these that were, you know, multiple lots put together to be a little generous. That hadn't been the case, though, and let me warn you. He's been real thickler in making you go to Building and Standards. You know, even though, you know, as a single lot, it would be fine. Let me just warn you, don't be shocked. But that's it. Fairly straightforward. Other than that, sir.
Thank you. Any, we'll just go ahead and see if there's any questions that any of the commissioners have of the staff at this point.
I do.
Go right ahead, Tom.
All right. So I guess first, I got a few questions. So all three lots, these are consolidated lots into one lot, right? First question.
Mr. Donnelly, you're muted there.
Oh, I was asking Roy from his technical.
Oh, okay. Sorry, Mr. Donnelly. Roy, you're muted, too.
GIS manager prepared the notices based on the TCAD data that was out of date. And so we updated it and it is one lot.
Okay. You said in your discussion that if a front, well, one, it talked about there appeared to be somewhat of a living area inside this accessory building.
It's kind of. A guest house, something.
Anyway, you suggested an alternative that it could also be permitted as a house if there was a front door.
Right.
You know, back there where the garage, I guess the driveway will be. Is that, even though, I mean, I can understand if it's a consolidated lot and no utilities and probably doesn't want to rent it out or whatever, but with that front door provision, is that something to think about as a condition of the permit for aesthetic purposes or is that something in our purview to think about?
The purpose of that requirement has more to do with 911, you know, emergencies.
Okay.
You know, the address is, this address is going to show up as being Suri Lane. Assuming nobody's going to be there by themselves and, you know, an ambulance show up there, but, you know, I was just bringing that up. It's going to have the appearance, and if not for the front door, and if he hadn't consolidated the lots, this thing could have got a single-family residential permit, except for that one thing.
Okay.
The living area wouldn't have been big enough, but, you know, it wouldn't have met that requirement. But it has the appearance of being that way, but, you know, that wasn't a suggestion or a condition. It was just, you know, make you realize that it's going to look like one.
Okay. And so the driveway width is going to be handled by the building committee, right?
They're going to have to, yes, sir. Unless, Aaron, you know, I mean, if Eric would have, I expected Eric to say, okay, well, as long as it's 12 feet at the right of way, it can flare out to as big as it wants, but that's not what he said on another situation.
Okay.
He made him, he's going to make these other people go to building committee. So I wouldn't be shocked if he did the same thing here.
And my last question really isn't directly related to this case, but it just brought up a question I had. You know, in your discussion, you brought up the situation where, you know, there's a height limit where heights are measured are different between the residence and the accessory building. And then also with, say, in the ordinance with, I think it's a garage or whatever.
Right.
Is there some inconsistency in our, you know, height requirements that needs to be addressed sometime down the road in an ordinance amendment?
I think it should. It's a little confusing. You know, why is a detached garage different than this accessory building? Do you follow me? That doesn't make sense to me versus the house, which has a third standard.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I guess that's what stuck out to me was that we might need to revisit this for.
Well, and you remember last time with the carport. The carport was a little too tall, but it was much shorter than the house.
Yeah. Okay. That's all I have.
Any other commissioner that would like to have questions for Roy? If not, then we'll ask the applicant. Mr. Donnelly, if you'd like to make your presentation.
Yes, you, thank you. I just wanted to thank you all for considering this for us and we've gone through several different building plans for this to try to get it to where it matches the aesthetics of the house and it's not going to be a hindrance, no metal building and things like that. It is a bigger building, but we're on to three lots, so I'm asking you to take that into consideration. As far as facing it and being a single-family residence, well, y'all know the cost of running utilities down that street and there are none on that street behind us, so that would be a very expensive garage if we ran utilities down the street. As we plan on, we've got the meter bigger at the house. We plan on running it off the meter into the sewer of the house on Suri, so that's not going to be an issue. And we don't plan on renting it out or anything. It's just basically a pool house that we added to the garage. We figured while we were building it, put it in, so. That's all I got and I appreciate your consideration.
All right. Any of the commissioners have questions for the applicant? Yes, Mr. Brown.
Thank you. Mr. Donnelly, there are, did you just say that there are no utilities at all on Sagebrush? And that if you were going to run utilities to this new building from that street, then it would be at your expense?
That is correct, sir. Well, yes, if I were to face it and then I'd have to reconsolidate the lots again to make it a single lot, which we just got through making it three lots, so I'd rather not do that either. But yes, if I faced it towards Sagebrush and ran utilities down Sagebrush, that would be a pretty big expense.
Well, as my colleague, Mr. Prince, pointed out at our last meeting, having the commissioners go by your site on Sagebrush, we have doubled the annual traffic on Sagebrush, we believe, by having the commissioners driving up and down the street because we were all lost to begin with. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Donnelly.
I guess, Mr. Brown, they didn't call the police on you this time, did they? All right. Any other questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I do.
Go ahead, Paul.
I'm just curious if you have any plans for the, sort of, the third section of this consolidated lot to the, I guess it would be the northeast part. No, that's for our deer and our foxes to run around. That's the pretty side. Yeah, one of the thoughts I had is whether we should be considering, you know, would this in the future be split off as a separate lot and then have a potential home, which would then be next to this garage structure? No, the plan is just that's going to keep our view in the back for the pool and one of the garage on the backside.
I would like to say that I was having a hard time understanding Mr. Prince. I don't know why, but even with my headphones on.
Let me turn off my camera and see if that helps. I think Mr. Donnelly answered the question. What I was asking, Richard, and by the way, are you hearing me better now?
It's, I guess it's louder, but not necessarily clearer, but thank you. I can.
Okay.
I can.
What I was asking is the portion of this consolidated three lots, does he have plans for that third portion? And it sounds like he does not.
Okay. Well, there is going to be a pool at some point, though.
There is a pool.
Pool's already installed. It's on the primary residence lot.
Oh, I didn't see it. Okay.
Oh, it was very nice. I took a little dip.
Glad you enjoyed it.
We could have all gone, except it would have been a quorum.
Oh, that's right. Right. Well, no speedos. Any other questions of the applicant at this time? All right. If that's the case, then we'll go ahead and open the public hearing at 7:17. Is there any members of the public that would like to speak at this time? All right. If that's the case, then we're going to close the public hearing at 7:18. And open it up for discussions amongst the commissioners and the staff.
For me, it seems fairly straightforward. I guess I don't have any real issues approving it. The only comment I saw was something about the height, but didn't to me, given seeing the area and stuff, it didn't have any real relevance to what's being requested here.
And I would certainly agree with Commissioner Monahan.
And I would certainly agree with Commissioner Monahan.
So if if I remember right from Roy's discussion, but the only special condition we should be adding to this it may need because of all these height differences in the ordinances that it may need a limitation of another foot or allow another foot of height, is that correct, Roy?
Yes, sir, that should accommodate what he submitted easily.
Okay.
While we're on this subject that Mr. Monahan just raised, i- is it worth it? Uh, should the commission get involved in changing that ordinance? So that the height calculation for accessory buildings is the same as it is for the primary residence instead of from the ground under the under the building?
Once we get back to work, yes, sir, I that that needs to initiate, either to initiate, but it needs to come to y'all before it goes to council. It's in chapter fourteen, you guys must have a recommendation.
But uh, a- all we all we would need to do would would be to add the the wording in the original uh ordinance to to also include accessory buildings, uh, and and then we wouldn't even have to write a special section for accessory buildings, isn't that correct?
There'd be some language you would have to take out of here to avoid the conflict. There there would be some deletions in this section.
Okay, well, it seemed, I mean, in in this particular case where the uh topography is not severe, it's not a big difference, but in many cases in particularly the 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 case of the uh topography of uh whatever it is, item three on tonight's agenda. The difference is uh it's significant and ought to be addressed, I think. Thank you.
I would imagine that would be a future agenda item when we are actually amongst one another.
Right, and if y'all want to, you know, with that portion of the agenda, direct me to prepare something. That's the time to tell me.
Well, we'll write that up as a future agenda item, Roy.
I would like to see it become a future agenda item and go ahead and get it done, it 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 seems to make very good sense. Whoops.
I agree, Richard. Is uh if there's no further discussion, then would someone like to make a recommendation?
I will make a recommendation that item number one of uh tonight's agenda two zero dash one six eight five eight dash C zero dash U that uh we would recommend to the city council of Lago Vista a conditional use permit application pursuant to section one seven of chapter fourteen of Lago Vista Code of Ordinances to allow an accessory building that exceeds the maximum size and height at two one seven one zero Surrey Lane, Barque Ranches, Platte, eight lot eight zero four nine A. How's that, counselor?
Andy White seconded the motion.
With a limit of nineteen feet, with a height limit of nineteen feet.
Uh, with a height limit of nineteen feet, that be acceptable? Thank you, Ms. Silvera.
Again, Andy seconded the motion.
I'm I'm sorry, I could not understand what that was.
Is Andy White saying I second the motion?
Oh, Andy, thank you very much, I I it was probably your mask. I couldn't quite understand. It's moved, it's been moved and seconded, is there a further discussion on this item?
Have we taken public comment? We got our public comment, sorry.
We, yes, we did. If there are no further uh comments, uh, if you could all I'll I'll call the uh role and that will probably assist us. Uh, Charles is never did join us, did he? Okay, uh, Tom Monahan?
Affirmative.
Richard Brown?
Yes.
Uh, Larry Hagler?
Affirmative.
Uh, Andy White?
Affirmative.
And Paul Prince?
Affirmative.
And I will vote in the affirmative as well, the uh motion carries, uh, any uh any opposed in there, I think we covered all the commissioners, the exception of Charles. All right. The motion carries, we'll now move on to item number two on the agenda. That's uh two zero dash one six four five PDD MOD consideration of a recommendation regarding a zoning change request to amend an approximately one twelve point one three seven acre portion of an existing uh Tuscaney Cove Planning and Development District PDD herein referred to as the Firefly Cove Plan Development District PDD in order to approve a new concept and detail plan modifying the uses and development standards applicable to the tract referred to as CA dash four in ordinance zero seven dash one zero dash zero four dash zero four. The property within the entire previous approval is commonly referred to as one nine five one seven Boggy Ford Road. And a legal description of the twelve point one three seven acre tract currently under consideration is available for requests from the city of Lago Vista. And Roy, if you would take us through the staff presentation?
Well, uh, this property has a very long and complicated background. And and uh I I told that whole story just so y'all would understand what the poor applicant has had to go through uh because of all the potential complications. Believe it or not, I think they've resolved them all, but we didn't want to wait around. And and even given all those complications that I think we're ready to address. Uh, I the intent was to defer any offsite improvements to Boggy Ford and to think harder about where the entry needed to go. So this was a really a good solution to uh let them get started and start building some houses. And uh, you know, defer that solution to, you know, let them work on the traffic, which, when they build out the whole thing, will be a much more significant issue. Uh, I I think this kind of worked out, that it was as simple as it was. Uh, be aware that, you know, uh, as as I tried to allude in the staff report, they have thought about what the whole thing is going to look like. The fact that they're just changing this twelve acres or so doesn't mean they haven't thought about it. The rest of it is going to be all residential and and dedicated open space and much less density than was originally proposed. And the engineer has, in fact, uh, done a model for the whole two hundred and eighty one acres, uh, you know, he's not going to paint himself in a corner by just doing this phase one A portion, he's he's thought about all that. So uh, he's done a good job and and we've got a nice safe thing, we'll we'll have uh a portion of Draper's Cove uh be improved and dedicated as a as a public street. And uh, we think this is a good approach, he I worked him to death, but uh they, I don't think any of them died yet. But uh, they may ready be ready to kill me, but other than that.
Uh, thank you, Roy, uh, any uh questions for the staff from the commissioners at this point? Yeah, go ahead, Tom.
Um Roy, and I'm looking at your technical summary, you know, you had two recommendations that we should look at is either, you know, uh, I guess approve or recommend approval of everything or just the immediate um development of the first twenty homes, I guess it is. I'm just wondering if you see an advantage of one over the other, because it it looked like they said that after this first phase, they probably coming back with changes, so.
They will, they will be part of this acreage that once they have a connecting road uh that the the international fire code limits the distance of the road and the number of lots both. But what there's a second way out of this subdivision, there will be more lots in this phase one A. But none of these are going to get torn down and redone. What what will be redone is the balance of the, you know, the two hundred and eighty one acres minus this twelve.
Right.
That redone.
Okay.
You're you're leaving that alone, the 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 alternate that you're referring to, you know, now that you have what's called the two step, where you can do a concept only or or a concept in a detail, you know, we don't know any detail that's missing. But that's, you know, if you feel there is detail missing on phase one A, you you certainly have the right to make that recommendation, but the staff is not aware of anything that hadn't been addressed.
Okay.
I was just in there, you know, it's it's a possibility. It's not, our recommendation is that this is ready to be detail and and concept plan both approval.
Okay.
In fact, you you've almost got the, the preliminary plat is what you're going to see very shortly, I assume.
All right.
The the engineering design looks like it's well underway.
Then also um I guess for some reason this wasn't approved or um I saw somewhere where he's asking for the mason requirement to be removed, which seems easy enough, but, I mean, just it's not enforceable anyway, so whether it was there or not, it's really a meaningless requirement anymore, right?
I think Aaron may have a, you know, Aaron may correct me, but it it we would we would have to take that out of any new ordinance anyway.
Right.
We can't, we can either enforce or adopt any ordinance that has that language in it right now.
Yeah, okay.
Gary, I got a question.
Uh, Richard, you go ahead first and we'll get to Paul.
My turn?
Yes, Richard.
Uh, Roy, uh, what is
You cut out.
Is the property uh that in in this twelve acres, does it include the right of way of Draper's Cove? It's run that way and
It most definitely does, but that that's not really a right of way now. It is just some paving, that's that's private property.
Okay.
And they own it.
And will it become a street uh as as part of the plan, okay?
Yes, sir, they will, whether we put a hammerhead at the end of that or, you know, whether they you know, block it off for the the rest of the private property, that the portion that to serve this will be improved and dedicated as a street up to their first left hand turn.
Okay, so but it will not then be be a through street, is that correct?
That is correct, it will be private property until a future phase, the rest of it. The and they'll they'll plat and dedicate that later, I presume, but they may also change the
Okay, uh, and and then uh it it's is some part of this twelve acre tract uh going to be commercial?
No, sir, not none of the entire track, to my knowledge, I mean, we originally, we we looked at this a month, two months ago, we were looking at all two hundred and eighty one acres and it was all residential and open space.
Oh, well, what I I guess the part that I'm looking at that discusses that is from the old Tuscaney Cove PDD
Right.
That had uh the uh the residential, excuse me, the the commercial uh aspects discussed uh the retail and shopping and so forth.
There were
Retail village, it's all, it's all old news, okay.
Right, and it will go away in the next phase. But to avoid those complications I mentioned earlier, the the best way to avoid them was to leave all that alone until we're ready to solve them, and we are now, but we we weren't a month ago.
Okay, okay, I I was just confused uh about that, uh, because I had read about the commercial uh in the uh in the PDD.
Well, I mean, I'll let the applicant speak, but like I said, I have seen preliminary plans for the entire acreage and there was nothing but residential and open space.
Okay, thank you.
Paul?
Uh, I actually think my questions probably are more for the applicants, so I'll hold off until after his presentation.
All right, very good, any other questions of the staff before we move forward? All right, if that's the case, then we'll ask the applicant to make their presentation.
Good evening, uh, my name is Dirk Gasta. First of all, I'd like to thank Roy and Aaron, and I don't see Eric on the on the names tonight. Um, but I was laughing earlier because, yeah, we went round and round and had some issues on surveys and and your your staff and the city have just been great. And I think it's probably a fair statement to say that, yeah, there was a time that we were about to kill each other. But um, it's all worked out just fine, so thanks, Roy, and and Aaron especially, appreciate your patience. Um, just a little history about who I am and really who I work for or work with. I've been a, I'm president of Sunrise Company right now, I have been since nineteen ninety seven. Uh, Aaron, my partner in that company. Uh, Sunrise builds country clubs and retirement communities across the Southwest. All in all, about fifteen thousand homes over the last thirty years. I've done personally about eighteen golf courses. Uh, usually largely amenities. That's not me.
Anyway, I was just, I was just getting off the boat, I'm sorry.
No, no problem. Anyway, um, and so we've uh we've done a lot of communities, but we are not only a developer, we typically build the vast majority of homes in each of our projects. Uh, we do that for a lot of reasons, architectural continuity, landscape continuity. We like to build a community, a place, and we will do that. Our plans for this for this entire project will do exactly that. Uh, I have spent my last five years, I was president of Brookfield here in Austin, I'm no longer with Brookfield. Uh, but Brookfield did two projects, Houston Tree was a retirement community down in San Marcos. Twenty five hundred acres and uh up and running and golf course and fitness center and lots of happy retired fifty five plus people. Uh, the thing you may, we also did East and Park, ten thousand homes down by the airport and it's popular price. Pardon? No, it's okay, I'll keep talking, sorry. So I have a lot of Austin experience, Sunrise has a lot of experience doing what we're presenting here. Uh, also joining me tonight is my son, Luke Gasta, who is a both partner and a vice president in Sunrise. And then our world renowned engineer, according to Roy. uh, Nick Sandlin is our civil engineer and he's here tonight should we need him for any reason. A couple things, one, just to clarify right out of the chute, no.
I think that noise is coming from Mr. Moody. Maybe Mr. Moody can mute his microphone and that will go away.
Thank you. The, when we come back with the plan, there will not be any, the retail village will go away. There will not be any commercial. Um, there is, there is substantial commercial up and down, one went forward. They're just building a new convenience store there on the corner. And we see that as, as a long demand site. And so, no, we are going to come back with residential. In short, what we are doing, the plan that is approved, the PDD, the, the Tussac County Pro Plan, uh, kind of it had houses all over the site. Played a little bit of attention to topo, but not a lot. And what we've done in this phase, what we'll do in the other phases is take less density and also bring it in tighter and stay on the flatter ground. Um, it just makes for a better sight. You leave all the, all the trees in the valleys and, and people get views and, and it's just, you know, we're trying not to, we're trying to use the land a little better, I guess. Um, so in short, that's, that's kind of where we're headed. Uh, but tonight we just have a simple 20 lots in front of you so that we can, so that we can get started. Um, I have a lot of stuff about our vision and I have a lot of things about what we think the market is. I've got a lot of answers, hopefully. At this point in time, um, I think Roy's report was done very well. I don't see anything that I can really add and I would probably just be taking up time of viewers that could be better spent. Um, so at this point in time, unless Roy differs, I would like to yield back to Roy and say that, look, we're available for questions. We can talk in detail. We think we can do what you need. We would appreciate your consideration on this site. Um, it's, uh, the owner is also person that says, and there is actually the owner of the property and has been for many years. Um, she's here tonight. So anyway, I will turn it back to you, Roy, unless you think that's a bad direction.
Oh, I, look, and, and like I said, I, I sort of alluded to it before. You know, I, I worked this thing hard to make sure all questions were answered and quite simply they are.
All right. Uh, thank you, Roy. Uh, any of the commissioners have questions for the uh, applicant? Paul, go ahead.
Um, a couple of questions occurred to me. Number one, so this had been RV boat storage. Now it's going to be 20 units. Is the RV boat storage moving elsewhere in the complex since we don't have the, the, the big picture in front of us tonight? I'm just wondering about that.
Um, we will address that in the new plan. We don't plan on a complex. But for example, in our, um, in some of our lots, we do plan on, on providing access. You know, a wider side yard setback for some of our plans so that you can either pull a boat or an RV down beside the house, behind the gate, um, depending on a lot, maybe even in the backyard if, if it's backing up to heavy, heavy cedars and heavy trees. Uh, we have not gotten to that detail, but when we bring the big plan back, we will have that defined.
I'm understanding, right? You're saying you, you no longer have plans for a centralized boat RV storage like this, this area CA4 had been?
Correct.
Okay.
They're, they're going to default to the normal Lago Vista standard.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, second question, um, the, uh, you know, the zoning for this is, is requested to be R1D with modifications and those modifications are fairly aggressive reductions in the setbacks. So pretty, pretty small lots. Can you talk to why the existing zonings within the city are not sufficient? Why, why this needs to be what I would, I would say are pretty, pretty small lots?
Um, what, what you're, what you're seeing in this phase up close to the front, yes, are 40-foot lots and 50-foot lots. Um, the overall plan will have additional 60s and we'll have additional state lots. Lots are the same depth as kind of typical production lot, they're 120 feet deep. Uh, the setbacks, we, we went back and forth with Roy. We like to create a street scene because we build every house. Uh, we're not afraid of any kind of, uh, repetition requirements that you currently have, like you currently have. You can't repeat a house. You can't repeat a plan. No problem for us. We have different elevations. We probably are harder on ourselves than, than you will be. But what we also do is take the front settings and we don't like to line our houses right up on the 20, on the setback line. And so we'll push some 10 feet back off of that. Others five, even 15 feet back, but they work together. We also have one plan out of the first five that has a, a side-low garage. You can come up and turn, you don't see all the garage doors every time you pass the house. Um, so those kinds of things are part of it. As far as the smaller lots, that really plays to the market that we're trying to hit. As you probably all well know, you know, the average price in 2019 was like 310,000. Um, the majority, 60% of those homes were sold were under that price. Um, we are trying to provide housing for two buyers. One is easy, pre-retirement, retirement. We've got a lot of those folks and I'm in that age one more year. It'll be 65, so.
I'm married and child.
Those folks are easy to, to design for because generally they want, they want a small, they're moving down, they want a smaller house. And that's in that 17, 1800 foot range, which is right where your average is now. You're like, you're like 1,900 square feet last year, 2019. So, um, what, what we're trying to do is get down in the 12, 1300 up to our biggest house is 2,500 of these five. And we want to, we're trying to stay and not only appeal to the retirement buyer, but younger families that are moving out here. We are half a mile or half a block. And I can run there in two minutes from the new high school. Um, schools are a big draw. They're excellent schools. And so we're trying to appeal to either a first-time buyer, millennials, that's looking for a smaller house, that especially these days with the whole COVID thing, there's just been a huge surge in this flight to safety and getting out of downtown or getting out of the city. Um, and so we're trying to appeal to those. So we'll have a small house that's two-story of family, three bedrooms, all up. And the next house up will be a single family or a single story, two-bedroom that's geared more for that retirement buyer. It doesn't, doesn't want the square footage, doesn't want a bigger house. So yes, we are trying to go to smaller houses, but, um, not totally across the board. It's just that this is the front phase. And, but we'll have some in there that are 2,500 square feet. Does that answer your questions? Does that help?
Well, I mean, that's the overall vision. I'm, my question really was about these 20 specific lots and they're just, they're pretty small, is my concern.
Um, I could, uh, I could compare it to, to Sarah and their best-selling products, same sort of lots that we're proposing.
I, I, I hear you. We just, we have, uh, a lot of citizens that are vocally complaining about the, the, these houses that are being built on the smaller end of the scale already, and these would be below that. Um, so that's, that's my concern. We'll, we'll talk about it more among the commissioners.
Okay.
Your overall vision sounds fine. It's, it's, I guess it's just these 20, 20 lots that have been a little concerned.
Thank you.
Other, uh, questions for the applicant? Uh, Mr. Brown?
Thank you. Mr. Gostin, um, you'll be the sole developer. About how many homes will you build a year?
Um, we are targeting, our, our business plan shows 75 a year, 72 a year.
And, um, how many lots, how many, how many homes will be in the 281-acre development?
Uh, the current PDD is approved for 315. We will be less than that. And we will have about 50 estate lots, if you will. So an acre or two, uh, larger lots, but they're in the better locations with the better views. So, and, and the balance of that, 300 or color, you know, 250 will be uh, 40, 50, 60-foot wide lots, more production.
I would, I would like to say I am pleased, uh, that you are, have recognized and appreciate the, uh, importance for, uh, diverse, uh, at least front elevations. Uh, our community has wrestled with that issue for some time and even though we have tried to, uh, deal with that by ordinance, uh, some of our efforts on that front uh, have been thwarted by, uh, recent legislative action. But, uh, I, I noticed that you have, have indicated that you will have, uh, 75% masonry. Is that correct?
Um, that's what's in the, the, the short answer is no. Some houses will have none, some will be 100, some will be 100%. So we, we mix up our elevations. Right now we have three. One is a, a modern farmhouse and we have a contemporary and then we have what we call hill country. So the hill country has more stone. Um, we mix it up. I think, um, we have a website if you ever, if you'd like to go. It's, you can Google Sunrise Company or sunrisecode.com. Um, it'll get all our communities there and you can see how we vary architecture, architectural styles within the same community. What we have found is that if you keep landscaping standards consistent, consistent from the, from the small house to the big house, and you keep architectural styles consistent across the board, you can put a $600,000 house next to a $200,000 house. And it gives you a great seat, great street scene, and it seems like a more custom community, even though we're repeating plans with different architectural fronts, if you will.
Okay. Uh, well, thank you very much. So, um, if I have to go back to the math, uh, you'll be built out in four years?
That's the plan.
Okay. I look forward to it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant at this time?
For clarity, Mr. Chairman, uh, I think Mr. Brown might have looked at that old ordinance, the one with the red boxes around it. The red boxes are the part of the ordinance that need to be addressed or are changed by their proposal. And that's, that's probably where the 75% masonry was in that old ordinance.
Oh, oh, thank you, uh, Mr. Jamboree. I, I have to admit that, uh, I had a lot of confusion dealing with, uh, the old and the new. And, and Draper's Cove as a street and, but privately owned and all of that. But, uh, yes, thank you for straightening me out.
Uh, yeah, I try to do that to make it easier, but you never know.
All right. If, uh, that's the case, we'll, uh, go ahead and open the, uh, public hearing at, uh, 7:53. Any, uh, comments on the, during the public hearing? I don't see anybody jumping right in there. Oh, uh, Mr. Roberts, uh, go right ahead.
Hi. Good evening. Um, I apologize a little, uh, might be behind the mark here, but I, is, we, we revised our city ordinances, um, not too long ago to allow for the initial um, phase presentation before it goes under official consideration. Did the first of those, if, if I'm understa, if my recollection is correct, um, if I'm wrong, let me know. But have we already done that first step or is this that first step now?
That's an optional two-step process. The, it's, it's not required. They can do both steps at once and that is the recommendation one that we think Phase 1 meets both the requirements of both.
Okay. And am I understanding, uh, the request correctly that they're seeking a deviation from our city ordinances in order to have smaller setbacks?
Yes, sir. And those setbacks are in that little narrative, if you will. They, they're within the tolerances of what we would allow. For example, of the, the 20 feet on a si, on a garage, we would allow that on a side of a corner lot already. So they, they didn't do anything that scared us that we don't allow already under certain circumstances.
Did, I did not see any letters, uh, in favor or opposed in the packet. Did I overlook anything?
No, sir. I, I got several calls asking for information, but once I sent them to the packet, you know, even before the, uh, the, the staff report was finished, I, I had the packet up there. And some of them saw it and just never called back, said they were fine, basically. They get it now.
Okay. Thank you very much for answering my questions, Roy. I appreciate it.
You bet.
Any other, uh, comments, questions, uh, during the public hearing? If not, we will go ahead and close the public hearing at 7:55. And we will open it up for discussion. Any of the, uh, commission, any further discussion? Paul?
Um, on, on the setbacks and I'll, I'll look for some clarification here. So I just kind of looked through the R1D setbacks and then looked at the, the changes here. So, um, the, the front setback for R1D is 25 feet. This has notes about 20 feet. But then there's some things that can overhang and bring out as far as 10. Roy, does our normal R1D allow things to be built out in front of the 25? Should I be carrying, should I be comparing 25 to 20 or should I be comparing 25 to 10 is really what?
No, and it's a very valid question and it's a very subtle thing. What is allowed to encroach that far is a covered porch, uh, a, a front porch, which typically the, the concern about the, the distance between the, the right-of-way and, and the, the building itself has to do with site obstructions. And of course, we allow overhangs, but the columns themselves wouldn't be allowed by our ordinance. But of course, the columns aren't really a site obstruction. You can see it in or in through a porch. So the staff really had no, you know, real concern about that encroachment the way that we, we would a, a full-fledged building that would create a site obstruction. And they added something that made me happy that I didn't even demand, but they, they did it on their own. They, they recognized, uh, on top of all that, they promised to, to maintain what we call the vision triangle, which is a 15-foot triangle between anything that might obstruct anybody. So on top of all that, they promised to, to make sure that doesn't happen and that satisfies the staff.
Okay. Thank you.
That's kind of the, that's the tolerance that you've heard us talk about in the Board of Adjustment. You know, for variances, you know, they're, they're doing, they're doing everything that we would oppose in a variance for. They, they covered all that.
I see. So, so I should think of this change in the setback on the front really as, as from R1D relative to R1D. It's, it's reducing from 25 to 20. That's kind of the, the fair comparison. Um, on the backside, the, and, and I guess I would be less nervous about that if it wasn't also for the fact that the backside setback is being reduced from 25 to 15. So in essence, that's bringing, bringing in both the front and back of the, of the length of the lot. The width of the lot seems fine, as, as the applicant pointed out earlier. It's, I, I think my main concern is that, uh, the density associated with this, this front back. So that's, that's, that's one thing that bothers me about this. Uh, the fact that these are 1,100 square foot versus 1,200 square foot, not a significant difference. It's more about the setbacks. It just, uh, makes me a little nervous about this one.
Uh, and, and that is somewhat consistent with the Tassera model. They also have very small backyards on some of the lots. Uh, simply for the reason that not everybody wants a big backyard to take care of. And, and some of these, you know, do have. And, and some of these, you know, do have plenty of backyards, but not all of them.
Okay, thank you.
Roy? Go ahead, Tom.
Roy, isn't also true, they, they, they chose R one D for their homes to put into their PDD, but in effect, though, they can request any changes to those because this is its own zoning requirement, correct?
Yes, sir, we just, we make them choose a label, and, and typically, we want them to choose the one that's the closest, and this one was fine.
Okay. Any, any, yes, Richard? Yes, Richard?
Oh, thank you. Are some of the variances and setback going to be seen in this first twelve-acre phase that we're looking at? Or are those things that we are only expecting to see in the remaining PDD when we see the rest?
Like an applicant question to me. I was waiting for Mr. Ghost.
Um, in, in short, you know, the setbacks, th, this is a, this is a, this is a site that abuts self-storage. Self-storage on the northern boundary behind those houses. In places, there's an eight-foot foundation with a, a ten-foot building on top of it, is their rear view. So this, this site, yes, whatever we do is improving things, but from a livability standard. So this, this is definitely, we try to keep the higher-density projects closer to the streets. As we get out in the, into the community, you'll see other phases with wider lots, bigger setbacks, because it'll fit better with the land, meeting that, that it got a view, or it's going uphill or downhill. This is a fairly flat site, and so we try to keep the higher density there, because if you don't, if you try to, I'm sorry, if you keep the low, if you try to put the high density on the more severe topo, you just end up with a mass sea of walls and, and, and a lot of costs, and it just doesn't work.
Well, in, in all, in all fairness, the, the staff pushed them to this particular piece of ground to start with, so that we could avoid the Boggy Ford traffic issues, you know, until we had time to do it correctly. So the fact that you're seeing this versus the, the nicer lots, that, that was kind of necessary to buy time. And that, that, that's kind of our fault.
So everyone agrees that there will be a traffic impact analysis, and that that will dictate how the merging with Boggy Ford will happen. Will, will there be any other streets for these two hundred eighty-one home, excuse me, this two hundred eighty-one acre project? Will there be any other streets for you to use to get out of Firefly Cove than Boggy Ford?
At this point, at this point in time, the TIA is going to tell us a lot when we update it. We're not sure it's going to change much, but I'm not a traffic engineer. So we do plan access on Boggy Ford to locate, or the previous plan counted on two accesses, one at Draper's Cove and one on Boggy Ford, both Boggy Ford and, and and Draper's Code, and then further down Boggy Ford, closer to Lowman. There was a second entrance, and then everything inside will, will loop and come off of that. There are ways to access to the west fairly easy, to the, to the existing residential streets. We just have not explored that yet. We're, we want to get settled in on our density and where it's going, and look hard at our traffic and what it's going to be like at both Draper's and then the other entry street. We don't want to, we don't want to cause, we don't want to build a community that's got, that's hard to get out of and doesn't work.
I, I appreciate that, and, and I appreciate that you do as well. We, we worry here, I, I know you're going to take care of a lot of the cedar that's around here now, but we worry about fires in, in our community, and this many homes having only limited egress and only onto one street is, you know, so, in some regards, adds to the potential problems for emergency egress. But I'm sure that you'll, you'll look at that, and, and I'm sure that the traffic impact analysis will tell us more with how you'll handle that. But you, you just mentioned Draper's Cove in response to my previous question, and I, I thought that I understood from Mr. Jamboree that the only homes that would use Draper's Cove to get to Boggy Ford would be those homes in this one twelve, twelve-acre tract, isn't that correct?
No, sir, that's just for Phase One A. I'm sure it'll be extended in, in subsequent phases.
Uh, Draper's Cove will be extended?
Yes, sir.
Oh.
Now, it may, it may not have the same geometry it has now, but
I see, I see, fine.
I, I can't, I can't imagine them not using it, but
Okay. When you and I discussed that earlier, Mr. Jamboree, I, I thought that you said that this hammerhead ending was going to be the extent of Draper's Cove. Okay, thank you.
That was just this initial phase, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any further discussion on the part, Andy, did you have something?
Yes, I, I would like to address the Draper's Cove entrance currently to Boggy Ford in this initial phase. Roy, I saw some commentary from you, I believe, that the existing Draper's Cove road would be brought up to city standards at the time of this Phase One development, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, can you tell us what that looks like?
Well, the engineer is here, he's probably had better discussions with Eric, I would be trying to quote Eric, which I'm not that good at doing.
I would be happy to hear from the engineer that that's the case.
That's no problem, so yes, we would bring Draper's Cove back up to city standard with a twenty-seven-foot pa, face-to-face pavement width, and centerline that onto the new right-of-way. Now it's a private road, we would dedicate the right-of-way and bring that up to city standards, as Roy mentioned.
Okay, so that would be one lane in, one lane out, or is there a turn lane? What is the plan for this initially? And the construction traffic, will it follow Draper's, or will it be a separate entrance off of Boggy Ford?
That's a good question, so we, we would, it would be one lane in and one lane out. Currently, the road, being private, is pushed fairly significantly towards the property line to the west, and we would utilize that pavement during construction so that access would not be inhibited in or out, and we would utilize a construction entrance off to the side of that. So we would phase that entrance so that it could be constructed without any impact to the people that use it every day.
Okay, because it is an extremely dangerous intersection right now. I have an office in the building backing up to this, and it's, I watch a lot of goings on, and it is, it's a dangerous little impact point for people journeying.
That's good to hear, and we definitely recognize that and, and plan for our development to, and it's in our best interest to make that a safer intersection.
So that would be post-development or pre-development?
Create.
I can jump in.
Okay.
It could be both, I think, is the answer. I think we're leaving enough right-of-way that if we need more lanes, we have the space for Phase Two and beyond. We also acquired the house on the northwest corner of Draper's Cove and Boggy, that white brick house to use as a temporary model slash sales office here for the next year, until our, until this phase gets developed, and then we'll move. So trust me, I, I found, I found out what those big rocks are for in front of the driveway there. It's because people are off the road, so.
And backing out of those driveways onto Boggy, almost impossible on that curve, it's extremely dangerous.
We both, my son and I, we both turn around on the driveway so we can drive out. So I reckon there, I think the TIA needs to look at, the important part of the TIA is it's much what we're doing, we're not changing our plans. But the TIA is going to look at what's increased beyond there and what's projected in the future. And then we'll be, say, here's what this intersection could look like, you know, and anything's okay except a bridge.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Brown?
Thank you. Mr. Ghost, will you have any sidewalks?
We do not plan any sidewalks, no we don't. We plan on a trail system tying some of the neighborhoods together that, that, you know, gets all the way down to the water at times. That's what we plan for the residents. What we've actually found, and I may be putting my foot in my mouth, but what we've actually found is that if you have communities without sidewalks, and, you know, we have, we have one in, we have one now that's developing, average price is two-point-three million. It's in the Palm Springs area, and we don't have a sidewalk in that community. People walk down the street, and it calms the traffic, and everybody knows people are walking in the street. We also have front porches on every house, so neighbors are always walking down, talking to neighbors as they're walking by, as they're walking in the community. I see the same thing in most of Lago, there are no sidewalks, and so people are using the streets. And I know I tend to go slower because of that.
That, that's true, we, we do not have sidewalks in Lago Vista. Okay, but how about something that kind of gets young people out of your development going toward the high school? I would like to let you know that it is in our, somewhere in my, my thoughts, that our long-term plan about development along Boggy Ford, between the area of your development and Lowman Ford Road, that we do plan to put in some sidewalks there to facilitate students reaching schools safely, because obviously Boggy, yeah, Boggy Ford is not a street that you can expect students to calm the traffic by walking in the traffic. So I'm pretty sure, and someone perhaps with better knowledge about this can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm pretty sure that we do plan sidewalks along Boggy Ford from about the area of your development all the way over to Lowman Ford Road for the benefit of students going to the high school.
I can assure you that we'd like nothing better, and we will participate in putting them in. Nothing better for us is we'd love for our kids to be able to walk to school without having to walk down Lowman Ford or some other street without a sidewalk. The new convenience store I noticed has put a sidewalk on the north side. I won't even count that, we'd love to have one on our side of Boggy Ford, too. One of the reasons for the delay is in the existing PDD, I'm guessing, I think there's a fifteen-foot dedication requirement for Boggy Ford. One of, you know, Roy, the pain in the ass that I wanted to kill at times, kept saying, well, that may not be enough, so stop, let's move you off of Boggy Ford, or off of Boggy Ford, and move you over to Draper's Cove. That way, when the TIA is done, if fifteen becomes twenty or twenty-five, we're fine with that. We're also going to have enough room to have a nice sidewalk, and by sidewalk, it's not three feet, it's more like five, six.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't remember anything fronting on Boggy either, in your other phase.
No, nothing fronting on Boggy.
Right, so the, a sidewalk at Boggy would be something they end up on, not something that connects to the houses.
Correct, but it would be, it would be a nice sidewalk, well landscaped, you know, fronting on Boggy.
Yes, sir, Mr. Jamboree.
Excuse me, Richard, I'd like to go back to Roy if we could, and maybe clarify something you might have said, Richard, about the sidewalks by the high school, is there something going on there, Roy, that we don't?
Well, there, there's a requirement in our standard ordinance that requires sidewalks within a certain distance of a school. And even though I think the convenience store is not within that distance, they decided to put them in anyway. This PDD, including the existing one, took that, took any requirement for a sidewalk out, regardless of how close the school is, and these gentlemen are not changing that. But like I said, you know, the, the idea that there would be a, a way for their residents, if they wanted to walk along Boggy Ford, that's not off the table, it's just within the development itself. They're
What I was trying to do, Roy, is just get clarification. Mr. Brown was talking about, it sounded like some future plan for sidewalks along Boggy Ford by the high school, and I know that's really, doesn't have a lot to do with this particular case. I just wanted to have some clarification if the city is putting in sidewalks along Boggy Ford.
Yeah, and, and we've talked about as Boggy and Lowman both develop, I, I'm not so sure we're all that keen on sidewalks right at the road. But we do want to be able to accommodate pedestrians if they want to walk from commercial establishment to commercial establishment well off the road. You know, we hope that there'll be internal sidewalks on their property that allow you to connect from property to property. That's, and that's kind of built into your design standards approval that you do for, you know, commercial and multifamily. You may remember some of the criteria talks about that, you know, pedestrian connections, but it, it doesn't have to be a sidewalk.
Thank you, Roy. All right, probably need to move along at this point. Is there any further discussion? I'd like to see if someone would like to make a recommendation then. Tom, are you discussing or recommending? You'll need to unmute there, Tom.
I thought you were asking for a motion, so that's what I was waiting for.
Right, right.
We note the time that we closed the public hearing.
Yes, we did, we closed the public hearing at seven fifty, I mean, I wrote it down. Yeah, seven fifty-two.
All right, and for agenda item two zero dash one six four five dash PDD dash M O D, I make a motion that Planning and Zoning Commission recommend City Council approve the amended PDD as drafted.
Counselor, how does that sound as a motion? Very good, thank you. Somebody like to second? Someone like to second? Okay, Larry, Larry Hager seconded the motion. It's been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion on this motion? If not?
Well, I, I, I've raised the concern of the size of these lots, and it's, I mean, it's a giant property, I don't see why it couldn't be addressed. I'm gathering that no one else on the commission shares I'm gathering that no one else on the commission shares this concern with me, but I just want to check to see if I'm the only one that has that, has that concern.
Okay. Any, yes, discussion, Mr. Brown? Thank you. I, I certainly share Mr. Prince's concern, but I do not think that, that, that that's part of our approval. It, it seems that the developers understand the market and, and they, they know what they want to build and what their customers want to buy. And I, I certainly, I wish everybody had an estate lot and that the density of Lago Vista was very, very low, but that's, that's not.
Mr. Brown, I'm not arguing for estate lots. I'm, I'm just saying that
I know.
we have some existing zones that are, are one, A, B, C, D, that, that effectively lead to limited, to limits on the lot size. And I really don't see why those couldn't be applied in this case. Because this is, you know, this is driving a pretty, pretty high density. And, you know, if we use, I, I, to me, this is well within our, our purview for planning and zoning. If anybody, you know, anybody can come in and say, we want to, we want to rezone this lot and, and change the setbacks, go for smaller size, and we have purview to decide on that or not. So, you know, I think it's a decision we should explicitly make. We may choose to approve it. But, but I, I, I think we do have authority to, as I understand it, we have authority to.
But at the same time, then we would, if, if we wanted to do this in this case, it'd be inconsistent with, say, what we're approving over in Lakeside, you know.
The Sarah?
The Sarah, Lakeside. So I think, I, I think we got a good plan here, and while sentimentally like to see some bigger lots and stuff, I think this is, you know, the plan is adequate to be attractive.
Any further discussion?
Thank you for the feedback, gentlemen.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. There's no further discussion. And time to vote. Mr. Monahan?
Aye.
And Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Hagler?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
I may surprise you, but I'm going to say aye based on the feedback of the fellow commissioners.
Not surprised, and I will vote aye. It passes unanimously and none opposed. All right. We are going to move on to item number three. And item number three is 20-1679-SP-E. Consideration of a special exemption application pursuant to section 11.60 of Chapter 14 to allow an increase in the maximum height allowed by Table 8 of Chapter 14 from 15 feet to 23 feet for a single-family residence at 8602 Bluff Ridge Trail, Barquet Ranches, Platte 12, Lot 12295. And if you would, White, go ahead and give us our staff presentation.
Yes, sir. I, I, I think I've identified the lot that, lots that might be most logically impacted. You know, this is one of the unused, there are a couple of things that are slightly unusual about, you know, this design, if you will, compared to what you see elsewhere in Lago Vista, but it's not that unusual for me. One is a, a steeper pitched roof, which with the heat we have here, there's, there's definitely advantages in that. And the other is that they chose to put the, the first, finish first floor slab higher than the rest of the lot. And, and both of those things, you know, cost them, if you will, the way we define building height. But, you know, that, that in, in many ways is largely responsible for why they're here. Nonetheless, like I said, there's, the lots that are impacted are, I don't know that there's any development on any of them yet. That's certainly, you know, as, as you're aware, for those of us that were around when we worked this ordinance and amended it, you know, we, we intend to protect vacant lots as well. So there are some that would be impacted. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Roy. Questions that the commissioners may have of the staff? Tom?
Well, so I guess to me, the only lot that would seem to have any potential impact would be number 18, which is immediately behind. It's on Barquet Ranch Road, I guess, would be that lot. But it's immediately behind, but I'm not sure. But it's relatively, once you get to the lot in question, it's relatively flat. And I don't see where any home, whether above the limit or at the limit, would change the lack of view. I mean, by right, would block any view towards the lake and that lot behind it. So, and I walked around some of the lots, and I just didn't see anything that was going to, no matter what the height of this house was, was going to impede any views.
Right. And I had the same impression, and I looked at Lot 18, and, and it has a good view still, even when they build. And I'm a little surprised nobody's built on that lot yet, to be honest with you. It looked like a good lot to me. I thought about buying it.
And just, I was out there today looking at it, and I don't know if anybody else recently had looked at it, but the, the markings on the ridge pole were missing, but I confirmed with Roy at the time it was constructed, they, the markings were there, so I guess I can't, can't fault the, the applicant for, you know, weathering and whatever, maybe.
They need to buy better tape.
Better tape, yeah.
Stickier tape, anyway.
Thanks, Tom. Somebody else have any questions for the staff at this point? Comments? I don't see anyone at this point. All right. If there's no further questions of the staff, we'll certainly move forward with the applicant presentation. And I see that Mr. Warlow is there?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your time. Roy, thank you for the description. The, the lot in question is we are looking to build for a custom home for a customer and to accommodate for certain considerations for ADA compliance as well as the ability to have mechanicals and other various items located in the attic and variously throughout the house. We are needing to build higher than that 15 feet above the high point of the lot. We are starting at the highest point of the lot where the slab will be and then going up from there. So there's no way that we can go any lower to accommodate for a higher space. Because of the limited restriction, we're asking to get higher height for those reasons. So thank you for your time.
And at this point, I guess we'll just have commissioners, any questions of the applicant? Larry, you left unmute your, there you go.
Chris, a question. When you said ADA, are you going to make this house basically 100% ADA?
That is correct. We're making it 100% ADA compliant.
Thank you.
Other commissioners have questions for the applicant? All right. If not, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing at 8:30. And I believe we do have a request from, make sure I have that there, Ms. Riley, and I believe I see her there, if you would like to take time that you would to speak.
Sure. Can everybody hear me okay?
Sounds great to me.
Okay. I'm Debbie Riley. I don't own lot number 18, but my husband and I do own lot number 19, which is adjacent to that. It borders Bust, Bronco Buster and Barquet. If I could own 18, that would be nice, but it's way too expensive, and I think he's got it overpriced currently in the market. But anyway, I digress on that. Chris, I really like your design. I think it's, the house looks great as far as I'm concerned. But I did have some concerns about, because the lot is very narrow at the front, the house is taking out the entire front side of that lot. And my concern is, with it being as high as it is, what kind of domino effect would happen for people on subsequent lots all up and down Bluff Ridge with people building that high, where it becomes a wall of homes where the lake view is, is deterred, whether you're driving or whether you're on lots across the street? That's, that was my concern about that. Because I know you can see the lake all up and down Bronco Buster, but the houses are recessed, set back far enough down that ravine. And so I was just kind of concerned what that would do and what kind of precedent would be set with building the house that close to the street and that tall. I think I heard somebody say that they didn't think there would be a view destruction, a view impediment. But I guess that's where I kind of differ. I think the line of sight is impacted. So I just kind of wanted to open that up for questions, and that was my main concern, was once this one was approved, will the next house to the north of it be right up there by the street, taking out the entire front end of the lot? All those lots are very narrow right up there at the street.
Thank you, Ms. Riley. Appreciate it.
Sure.
I, I guess for myself and my observation out there, all the lots that I could look at, if there was a home built just to, what it, to, to right at the 15 feet, I think I, I can't, I can't see how, you know, that, that's going to be any more of, of an obstruction to a view at 15 feet as it would be to the 23 feet, so. And, and I guess as far as a precedent, Roy, you might even be able to help us with this one. I believe at one point we had approved a number of, it was an actual area up towards the airport there where a whole section was approved to exceed the height limit. Now, am I mistaken, Bro? I thought we had done something up in the airport area at one time with a number of lots.
It has to do with the zoning on the, what I would call the east side of Barquet Ranch Road. Those have a zoning category that allows greater height.
But, could I ask a question, a follow-up question to that?
Yeah, Ms. Riley.
I understand what you're talking about on the east side, but aren't those homes built further away from the street and down into the ravine where they're not really above the street level? The ones I, the ones, yeah, the ones I've seen are two and three-story houses, but they're down in the ravine.
Yeah, the one, the ones we were talking about are the ones that are all the way on the top of the hill at the airport.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No problem.
Thank you, Ms. Riley. All right, are there any other comments during the open public hearing? I don't see anyone coming forward. We did have another request, but I don't see that person here. If that's the case, then we will go and close the public hearing at 8:35 and open up for any further discussion. Any further discussion?
Well, I, I mean, I would just say, I, I guess I'm seeing it the same way that, that Tom had said and what I heard you saying, Gary. This is Paul Prince speaking, by the way.
Yes, Paul.
I, I forgot to ask to be recognized, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, very recognizable, Paul.
Yeah, turn my camera on. But I, I see it the same way, that, that anything built is going to block the view that this would, this additional height would, would block. And there's really no architectural context to be out of context with in the neighborhood. So that, that doesn't seem like an argument that could be used against it. So from my perspective, this passes our standard rules when we're, we're looking at an exception on height.
Thank you, Paul. Any other discussion items at this point? If not, we'll make a motion that consideration of item 20-1679-SPE to allow a special exception pursuant to section 11.60 of Chapter 14 to allow an increase in the maximum height allowed in Table 8 of Chapter 14 from 15 feet to 23 feet for a single-family residence at 8602 Bluff Ridge Trail, Barquet Ranches, Platte 12, Lot 12295. Is there a second to the motion? Tom Monahan has seconded the motion. Is there further discussion on this particular motion? If there's no further discussion, Tom Monahan?
Aye.
Richard Brown?
Aye.
Larry Hagler?
Aye.
Andy White?
Aye.
Paul Prince?
Aye.
And Gary Seleski also votes aye. It's unanimous. There are no in the negative. And the motion carries.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Mr. Brown? Ms. Riley, thank you very much for coming to our meeting tonight and sharing your thoughts. It's often difficult to assess a situation like this when the other homes that we would like to protect are not.
assess a situation like this when, uh, the other homes that we would like to, uh, protect, uh, are not there yet. And, uh, your, your concern about what might happen, uh, going on down the street, um, may indeed materialize. It's hard to, it's hard to predict. Um, but thank you, uh, for coming to our meeting tonight.
Thank you for having me. And, and I just, like I said, y'all were very helpful in, in the information that you provided. Hopefully by next spring, we will have started building on our lot. Um, and I know that there's some neighbors around there that are planning to build at the same time. It's just COVID kind of messed everybody up on who was going to be doing what they were doing. So I appreciate, uh, you allowing me to give you some input.
And thank you again, Ms. Riley.
Okay.
I'm a little surprised there's not more development there also. I mean, I was, this was a little jewel hidden in there. It really is.
View is amazing.
All right. If we could move along to, uh, item number four, uh, Arch, uh, you're, we're going to, uh, uh, pass along some words of wisdom from the city council for us, if you would.
Well, sir, I'm going to disappoint you because I don't have any words of wisdom. Uh, the only thing that I would add though, is that, uh, you can expect Councilman Williams to return to your next PNC meeting. I did find it very interesting that you had the second, uh, item for discussion and the recommendation to approve this PDD. Uh, that looks to be a, a fairly sizable, um, PDD being a twelve acre lot, but also being a part of a much larger, uh, PDD. So we look forward to, um, to seeing that develop. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Arch. And, uh, I don't believe, uh, Roy, at this point, we're maybe going to be looking at, uh, minutes.
No.
Poor old Alice. I don't know if you guys have seen it, but, uh, we had a hundred and forty, uh, single family residential homes that we permitted in the last two months. And several hundred other kind of permits, we've been hanging on for dear life.
Wow.
As well as, as well as code enforcement also.
That's, that's an even worse story, actually. Apparently, uh, building permits are now considered very optional in recent months.
Uh, Roy, uh, in your comments, uh, somewhere, uh, just attached to our, uh, packet, I think, you, you mentioned, uh, that, that there is a, uh, an, a position posting on, sitting on the city manager's desk, uh, at this time, uh,
I think it,
that for staff or your group?
Yes, sir. In fact, I think it's on the website already. Later in the day, it made it to the website.
Well, congratulations. I'm sure that, uh, you can, uh, use all the help you can get. And, and by the way, uh, I'm, I'm happy to send my colleague, Mr. White, uh, to, to come in and assist you, uh, when, whenever, whenever you'd like. So just give him a call.
Thank you, Richard, for volunteering my services.
It, it's my pleasure, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, yes, uh, Ms. Levere.
Did someone mention, uh, at the last meeting about the timeframe for expiration of terms and the submission of, uh, applications for new, uh, to renew your seat or, uh, additional appointments? If not, that's coming soon.
Well, thank you for bringing that up. Uh, we did get an email, uh, from, uh, Mr. Jamboor, uh, and identified those individuals whose, uh, terms are about to expire. And, uh, that they do in fact need to reapply and, uh, may have, uh, you know, a vacancy in there, uh, depending on how the, uh, election comes out. So.
Well, if I may, on that note, um, after much consideration, I will not be seeking reappointment, but planning.
Oh, no. So, what? Possibly, possibly two. I'm,
Do we need to vote on that? No.
So you, so you actually are going to accept the appointment to, uh, assist Mr. Jamboor? Going to have a lot of time on your hands, Andy.
Yeah, so much time, right? I, I hope to one day, but I have to put the, make the last press on the business here and I'll be back in the public life when I've completed this mission.
Uh, I would like to add one other thing. Uh, isn't it true that, uh, Mr. Jamboor's birthday is coming up any day now?
Who's passing this out? I haven't celebrated, I hadn't celebrated a birthday in decades.
I think I started it.
Well, uh, in, in any case, uh, uh, I, I think it's coming up on the sixteenth. Is that correct?
Thirteen, actually.
Thirteen.
Oh.
Every now and then I have a Friday, the thirteenth moment.
That's Friday, the thirteenth.
You're going to start the song. We'll sing along with you.
Oh, really? Is it, I, I, let's tell you what, what we could all, uh, wash our hands at the same time as we sing.
There we go.
The twenty, the twenty-second song. Yeah, but you, you want to, you, you want to be very careful as you enunciate your Ps as you sing that. Or the, uh, to you, uh, you, you may all want to put your masks on as you do that.
Well, I don't know. The, the, uh, quality of the audio, uh, from these, uh, cheesy mics, uh, is, is so poor that, uh, as badly as we probably sing in person, uh, it would probably be even worse, uh, uh, over these, uh, microphones. So I won't, uh, embarrass Mr. Jamboor further by, uh, add, adding to this, but, uh, particularly since he says he hasn't celebrated a birthday in decades. But, uh, anyway, I'll send my best wishes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Are you, are you going to, are you going to go visit CCLA or something, uh, Roy? Uh, maybe a reunion?
I, I used to go a while back, but that, it's a long trip. It's,
It is, isn't it? Well, maybe we could get you, maybe we could get you, uh, but, I don't know, maybe a bus ticket.
It's hard to get there from here. You know that.
Oh, let me tell you. But they do have an airport.
They do.
Yes, they do. They have a very good flying school, by the way.
Uh, that was part of my goal, was to leave there with a private pilot's license. My architect professors had a different idea, however.
Well, I logged many hours.
Yeah.
I logged many hours out of the, on the airport. All right. Well, if there's nothing else, we will adjourn and happy birthday to all. Andy, uh, I, I'm saddened, but.
Future agenda. Andy, thank you. I've, I've learned a lot from all of you guys. And Andy, thank you for the, the part you played in my education on, uh, on PNC here. Good luck.
Sure. I enjoyed the last seven years. I truly have. It is definitely, I encourage any community member to get involved and do this.
You will be missed, sir.
Thank you.
Tom? The future agenda items? Yes, I'll, I'll jot it down. We have one already.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we have that down for the, getting ready to draft, uh, ordinance change to, for the,
Yeah, that,
the height adjustments.
Yeah, that one's easy enough. I don't think we need a lot of discussion. I can probably get it closed.
Okay, that's all.
Yeah, that's something you can do in your spare time.
Between, between driving Mr. Goes to crazy. I worked it pretty hard. He was not joking.
I'll attest to that.
Well, it certainly sounds like you are very, very busy with all of those, uh, uh, building permits and, uh, that's, uh, quite a change for Lago Vista, that only about five years ago, only had about fourteen building permits for the entire year.
We, we're at three seventy-one this year, sir.
Wow.
How many?
Three seventy-one.
Three seventy-one, wow.
There's two, two point five people or two point two people, uh, that's another, uh, boost, boost to our, uh, uh, citizenry, although, uh, uh, since no one in Lago Vista had bothered to respond to the census, uh, I think our population, uh, the official population for the city is probably going to drop to about forty-five hundred. If I could, uh, since we have not adjourned yet and since I am a, uh, federal employee of the U.S. Census Bureau, uh, Department of Commerce. Wow. I would have to, uh, just try to clarify some things. You've noticed that, uh, this is probably the easiest way to explain this. Many times when, uh, you're asked online to put your zip code in, seven, eight, six, four, five, what, uh, usually pops up?
Leander.
Uh, there you go. Well, it seems as though all the cases that were assigned, even though they're in Lago Vista with seven, eight, six, four, five, were listed as Leander. So they're, they are being sorted out. I've been assured by, uh, Secretary Voss of the, uh, Department of Commerce, you know, since I'm, You and Betsy are friends, huh? Oh, listen, I, I, you know, as a denumerator for the, uh, U.S. Census Bureau, uh, uh, Wilbur and I have become very close and, uh, and so anyway, uh, I understand that they have, uh, worked diligently to make sure that the, uh, items that were on the census for two thousand and twenty, that were actually in the city Lago Vista are being counted towards Lago Vista and that they'll get that percentage adjusted. Oh, I'm, I'm so glad to hear that. Thanks for sharing. Well, you're more than welcome. And, uh, any of you who haven't done your census, uh, get busy. Otherwise I'll be knocking on your door. Oh. If I'd known that, I wouldn't have sent mine. And with that, there you go. Mr. Brown? I'll come over anyway. Thank you very much. And at eight fifty-two, we are, we are adjourned.